Welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting of March 9th, 2020. We're at the multipurpose room in the Bennington Fire Facility. I'm Donald Campbell, I'm the Chair of this Board. And why don't we ask our individuals to introduce themselves? And since Stuart's not here tonight, we'll start on my far right.
Yes, well, I'm Dan Mox, I'm the Assistant Town Manager.
I'm Jeanne Connor.
Bruce Lee Clark.
Jim Carroll.
Jeanne Jenkins.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Nancy Law, please, sir, for your.
Great, thank you very much. I'd like to say the Pledge of Allegiance, and then I'm going to ask the Board to switch around the agenda a little bit. So why don't we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will lead it tonight. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So before we start our meeting, I would like to ask the Board if we could please remove item number four from the agenda, which we are not ready to discuss at this point. That's the S V M C land sale. And if we could add to the agenda, as a first item of the agenda, an update on the coronavirus, the COVID-19 virus, which has been all around us for quite a while, but is now, as many people know, in our community or near our community. So we're very lucky to have people from the hospital who are willing to do that. Are we okay with that change of agenda?
Sure.
If so, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So the first order of agenda tonight, then, will be for us to introduce Tom D. And I'm really thankful for you to be here tonight and give us, introduce us to your people that you've brought with us. But the whole community has been watching this, and I think a fair amount of anxiety, but we're really glad that we have a good healthcare system to take care of us. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all for inviting us to come here tonight. I'm going to introduce a couple of individuals who I work closely with in a moment, but let me first give a statement, and then we'd hope to be able to have interaction, answer questions you may have. So on Thursday, March 5th, Southwestern Vermont Medical Center had an adult individual present to its emergency department with fever, cough, and shortness of breath. The person was admitted, immediately placed in isolation in a negative pressure room, and tested for COVID-19. Early testing results from the Vermont Department of Health came back as presumptive positive. Conclusive results are expected from the CDC early this week. Health officials are investigating the person's travel history, and are conducting contact tracing for anyone who's been in close contact with this person. Those individuals will be assessed for their exposure risk, and provided with guidance for testing, and recommendations for self-isolation, and other restrictions. For patients who have referral for COVID-19 testing from their primary care provider, S V M C offers a new drive-up testing service. The service allows patients to remain in their cars. The process was initiated over the weekend to minimize potential viral exposure to other patients and staff for patients who do not need emergency care or monitoring. Following Vermont Department of Health protocol, outpatients have been instructed to contact their healthcare providers if they have traveled internationally and have symptoms. Their provider will contact the S V M C nurse designee, who will coordinate a time for the patient to drive to S V M C to be tested. The hospital, along with its series of health centers and departments, are open and safe for patients. Upon arrival to S V M C, in the S V M C emergency department, patients are screened for cough, fever, and international travel. This allows for early isolation of patients with potential COVID-19 symptoms. S V M C is prepared to care for all patients, including those diagnosed with or suspected of having COVID-19. Our infection prevention team, comprised of doctors, nurses, laboratory technicians, and respiratory therapists, are in hand to care for any patient who arrives at S V M C and who is suspected of having a high threat of infection. Certainly, our thoughts are with this patient and for his recovery. The care and safety of our patients is of the utmost importance. And while we hope the virus did not spread into Vermont, S V M C and the Department of Health have been working together in preparing for COVID-19. More information can be found on our health systems website, svhealthcare.org, as well as the website of the Vermont Department of Health and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention website. So I've asked tonight for two of our leaders, Dr. Pamela Duchaine, who's our Chief Nursing Officer, our Vice President of Patient Care Services, to be here tonight, as well as Donna Barron. And Donna is a certified nurse infection preventionist, and certainly one of our key professionals who's helping us to deal with this challenge, healthcare challenge. So I thought maybe I could just open up and try to answer any questions you may have, and also, I'd like to have certainly Pamela and Donna be available to respond to.
Do you, thank you very much for being here tonight. Do either of you have anything you'd like to add before we go into questions?
No, just to echo what Tom has already stated, that the hospital is a safe place to be, it's a safe place for you to receive care, and the steps that we've taken to really make sure that we're controlling access, that we're screening individuals as they enter the hospital, much more stringently than we have in the past. You know, it is still flu season, so we are really putting some stringent screening processes in place that will assure that we stay a very safe organization.
Okay. Anything?
And I might want to just add that we've been in constant discussion with the Department of Health, and they have really cited the hospital for extraordinary preparation effort, really led by these type of individuals who have been working countless hours preparing for this. And we know we could be in here for the long haul, but the department is using us as an example for other hospitals to follow. I know we have a conference call with a number of hospitals tomorrow to talk about how we're handling some of our protocols.
Great. Would you be comfortable taking some questions from the Board first, and then possibly fielding some questions if there are any from the audience?
Sure thing.
Would that be comfortable? Okay. Sorry, we were getting a little TV direction here. You must have known you were going to be on TV tonight.
No.
All right, so I would like to ask the Board if they have any particular questions, and Jim, I know, you've got your finger up and down, and up and down, and up and down. I'm going to ask you not to ask all your questions at once, but ask the most pressing questions, and then I'd like to give other people a chance to.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
As you, many of you don't know, this morning, the entire Bennington County delegation had a briefing through the Department of Health, and we learned a lot of information. And one thing that I want to have Tom clarify or confirm, and that is initially, the Department of Health said that you would need a doctor's order to get tested, but apparently, through an intermediary, I've learned that the Department of Health can actually give the order for the test. Is that true or not true?
The department can give it, I think they can give an order.
That's correct.
Their recommendation and protocol is a healthcare provider would be the one that would, patients would call, and that individual then would work with the Department of Health to verify that a test should be done.
Okay. The concern was that, you know, number one, if patients were to go into a packed waiting room at a doctor's office, would certainly increase risk to those in particular. And I wonder if the hospital has adopted a protocol with respect to doctors and open office hours to prevent the spread of this.
Well, I'm sure these two can respond, but one of the reasons why we've moved, as of this weekend, to the testing that can be done via just driving your car up on our campus, and it's going to be a designated area, you don't even have to get out of the car. If the appointments are made, and the appointments will be made through the doctor calling the hospital and scheduling it, the patients will not have to go into a crowded doctor office or a crowded emergency room. They can have our team come right out of their car and take the test, take the swab right there.
But Jim, your point is if you don't have a designated provider...
Well, if you don't have a primary, right, if you don't have a primary care physician, you can go to the Department of Health and get the order to test.
Yeah, and yes, but we're also working on creating a system, and hopefully by the next 24 to 48 hours, we'll have that, that if a person doesn't have a, their own primary care physician, we're hoping to have a designated provider who can act as the ordering provider for these tests.
That's great.
That's great, thank you. And this, we recognize this as fast breaking.
Right.
And we just put this together yesterday afternoon, so, you know, really grateful to have you here, and we realize it's changing hour by hour, so thank you for that.
It's very dynamic.
So Jeanne?
Let's see, I am very confident that you have the ability to take care of everyone who needs to be taken care of. The infection rate at the hospital, historically, has always been very low, so that just makes me feel really great. Let's see, where exactly on the campus is the drive-through spot? Is it easy to find? Is it...
Well, you know the campus, so it's going to be easier for you. We will designate it publicly, but it's going to be near the doctor entrance, which is the flagpole entrance.
Yep.
And we'll have signage that will direct people.
Okay. And that signage will be a maple leaf.
Yeah, it'll be the hospital logo.
That's a great idea. And I'm assuming you're in close contact with the S V S U, giving them information about making decisions for the school system?
Oh, yes.
Great, that's all. Just wanted the public to know that there's a constant flow of communication, I'm sure.
I feel like I also heard that you had, at the point of intake, you had people outside the hospital asking people if they needed to be wearing a mask, if they had any...
Right at the entrance. Yes.
And you'll find that at all the medical practices, too, one of the things they do is they start screening as you come in, and if somebody has a positive screen, which could indicate COVID-19, they take them right in and put them in a private room, and close the door. We're trying to minimize all the risks that we can.
Bruce, did you have your hand up?
No. My question's my answer.
One of the things that a very intelligent friend of mine, who's much smarter than me, asked me about was, how do we keep the message in our community clear and unified? So around the country, it seems like one of the things that's been happening is that there's been very mixed messages from different parts of the government, whether it's federal government, state government, or within government, and what might we be doing as a community to make sure that everybody's getting the same information? Is there a possible role for the town, or should we really be sending everybody directly to the hospital website or the healthcare? How do we make sure that people aren't getting different messages during this...
Well, we certainly encourage, in my mind, the three major websites that people are looking at, and certainly our local websites are great for these type of on-the-ground issues you need to have answered. The Department of Health of Vermont is a very, very good website that has extensive information, and of course, you know, the Center for Disease Control, CDC, is a website that we all use quite a bit. And so I think if we direct people to the right information, and not just going towards information that could be very much wrong, I think that's a very important piece to do. One of the things that we're creating, and we're working on, again, this is real-time working, we're working on a, I guess you would call it a hotline, what's the term we're using?
Hotline.
Hotline that can, that people can call, and there's having it staffed by live people, as well as recordings of giving the most updated information of what's going on.
So that's not up and running yet?
It's not, but I would say by the end of this week, Dawn, it will be.
Okay. So I guess I just would, is the site that we should be all watching, the health?
I think the Vermont Department of Health is a great website.
Okay.
You know, I think it's one which, you know, I think it has a lot of good information. We use it a lot, you know, and we are in, especially, you know, Donna, we're in constant dialogue every day, several times a day with them. So, and they don't have all the answers either, and this is a work in progress for all of us, same for CDC. But we are collaborating very closely, and so we're the boots in the ground, but we use them for our guidance.
Well, as you might imagine, this is extremely important to us as leaders of the community, and we want to do everything we can to be helpful in this situation. We, when we found out about it Sunday, we struggled a little bit with what's the best response from town government, so we did, thank you to Shannon, you know, we did work on getting it on the town website and whatnot, but even that can, it's difficult to keep up to date and keep comprehensive, so...
But we are trying to stress that the hospital's safe. People should not be afraid to come to the hospital. They should not be afraid to utilize their services. You know, we have extensive protocols in place to protect against this, so people should not avoid getting necessary treatment and care. And I will tell you today, we had, you know, literally hundreds of cancellations of people who were, who just were afraid. And that's not going to, you know, when there's a lot of legitimate healthcare needs that are not COVID-19, and people are going to start putting off and delaying and avoiding, and that's not, that's not a strategy for success.
That's going to be problematic in its own way.
Yeah.
Yeah. Other questions from the Board? No? Does anybody in the general public have any questions about any of this? No? Okay. Well, I guess where I'd leave this maybe is, if there's anything that we can do as a town, as a town government, to help with this, we would like to do it. We're not sure what to do, other than try to keep people informed, but through our town website, and by directing people to the Vermont Department of Health, we will continue to try to work with, on the communication end of it, but please, let us know if there are any other steps that we can take to be helpful.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And your ongoing support, and again, this is, this is a significant challenge. This is one which is testing the whole healthcare system nationwide. So I think the more we can collaborate, work together, work with school districts, other entities, we're going to have to do that to be successful here.
To your great credit, though, Jim Tramarki told me several weeks ago that you were ready for it, even then. So you were clearly ready.
We've been preparing, yes.
You've been preparing, and you were ready. At, you know, 100 cases in New York, whatever, how many cases in New Hampshire, cases in Massachusetts, it's all around us, it had to happen at some point. I'm very sorry that it happened in Bennington, but would be very surprised if it didn't happen throughout the state eventually.
Right.
Yeah. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for making the effort to come. Yes, and don't feel, don't feel you have to stay for our meeting. You've got much more important things to do.
Other work to do.
All right, so as far as, just from this Board's perspective, as far as communications go, let's keep it tight, and let's direct questions to town staff. You know, let's start with, make sure that our communications go through the town channels so that we can get all the information up, and be sure not to offer a confused message to whoever happens to be listening to us.
And we didn't mention at all, you know, the recommendations, wash your hands, and all of those, I feel like a broken record, but...
Don't touch your face.
Don't touch your face, wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands, and...
If you have any symptoms, yes.
If you have any symptoms, take, don't delay.
Make a call, drive up to the hospital, get a test. Yeah. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is public comment. We have one person that would like to comment tonight.
Dawn, do you want to?
I'm sorry, consent agenda. I'm out of order. Number two, consent agenda, the minutes of February 24th. Thank you, Jeanne, what a great Vice Chair. And February 17th, as well as the warrants, which, if you have not had a chance to talk to Dan or Stuart about any of your questions, now would be a time to bring them up. And we also have a few liquor license items that have been circulated, so I would look for a motion on the consent agenda for the purposes of discussion.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So we, any questions or comments about the minutes of the 24th, the 17th, the warrants of liquor licenses?
I was absent on the 17th, so I'll stay.
Okay.
I just wanted to tell the public that I clarified with Dan, I thought this was the case, but I just wanted to be sure. We go through this process of approving liquor licenses on a regular basis, and I just asked, if there was a problem with one of these establishments, we would know. So I just wanted, I was just thinking, we've never come across that, but that is the case, that if there was a reason to not approve them, we would know what that reason was.
Yeah, the liquor license approval is somewhat perfunctory, but we're glad that the town staff watches over it.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, other comments? No? All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, pose. So now, we can move on to item number three, the public comment. We haven't, Mr. Stuart, come on up. We did have a letter circulated to us from Stuart Hurd about water, but we'll let you let you say your piece first.
Well, good evening, everybody. Good evening, residents of Bennington. My name is William Stewart, and most of you know me very well. The handout that I gave to you was a letter that not Stu and I gave to me, and an email, after this is like, this is my seventh time being here to bring up this topic about the trafficking of the water on Bradford Street. So now, it looks, it seems to be like everything was doing well till about maybe three weeks ago, and then the trucks slowly started ramping up production of water. Now Friday, I had Friday off, and I had today off, and I took video all day long, I'm sure most of you got the video that I sent you. And they put 14 trucks in there, one truck every 25 minutes to 30 minutes, and the one-hour restriction time has just gone to the wayside. And apparently, now that Stu's on vacation, they've noticed that, know that he's on vacation, and they are drag stripping water out of that aquifer. And of course, today, the windows are open, wide open, and it's all you're hearing all day long, and the smell of diesel, because it's just, it's not enough time for the truck to trailer traffic on that street. And at this point, I've been here so many times to bring this up, I think that we need to have some kind of solution to this problem. Something to make these guys understand that one thing, the rule is the rule, why do you keep going back and doing it? Why do I have to keep coming down here and asking Stuart, our town manager, to change it? He, countless, countless, countless emails, he does it, they stop it, they go back to doing it their way. I don't understand why, in this day and age, if the rules are made and they're not applied to, why do we keep dealing with it? This is like now my eighth time that I've been here to talk about this, and it's still the same thing. I know you probably aggravated seeing me come down and ask these questions over and over, but why isn't it brought to the attention and made a fact that it's going to be this way? And it goes back to doing it, and here it is, daylight savings time, they're putting 14, trying to put 14, 15 trucks into that aquifer a day. And if it wasn't for me standing out there, they'd probably do more, and they know I'm there. And when I'm not there, they go right back to doing what they want to do. And it's out of control again. It's literally out of control. 14 trucks a day is too many trucks inside that residential neighborhood. And I don't know what the solution is, but we need to find one. These guys just keep going back to it. I had a word about with Jimmy, about maybe putting maybe a ban on the water for a month, and see if they don't like that. Because if they don't like it, they wouldn't keep going back to doing it their way. And I don't understand why it's got to be their way. It's our water. We should be in control of our water, not whatever name that company is this year. They change it every other year or so. I don't even, Premium Waters is now, but it still started back when Stu started this contract. This is Stu's problem. He made this problem, he does nothing to stop the problem. He lets it go back, falls, slips back into where it is right now again.
Okay. Okay. Well, Dan, would you like to talk about the contract again, or would you like to give us an update on anything else that's happening?
Well, this is the first I've heard that they've gone back to going more than once an hour, so thank you for that, Mr. Stuart. But the contract actually doesn't limit the amount of trucks that can go there, they limit hours of operation and gallonage per day. So we do not have explicit limits on how many trucks can be there per day. The company has occasionally, apparently, complied with our requests for one hour per truck, but we do not, we cannot terminate the contract if they violate that particular statute.
You sure can. You have the right to terminate that contract. If you haven't read the contract, I'll send you a copy of it, because it states in there clearly, we have the right at any time to end this contract if they do not abide by the laws that you have set forth.
Mr. Stuart, Dan's a, you know, Dan's a lawyer, and he's been through this contract in detail. So I'm not going to get into a spitting contest of who knows more, who understands the contract better. If you're telling us that stopping selling water for a month would be a breach of contract, I'm inclined to believe you.
Our reason, that we can stop it if it's a public health issue, or if we need the water to service our water needs, but we have excess water. They are not taking more gallonage than they are allowed to under the contract. My understanding, there's been no assertion that they've been operating outside of the hours of operation that they're allowed to, so, you know, we can continue to have discussions with them and make it clear to them that if they don't follow what we hoped they would do, that we won't renew the contract, and I think that's been made very clear to them. But as far as just terminating the contract, not only do we lose the revenue, we also risk a lawsuit where we would be liable for damages to them. So I would recommend, if this is happening, and it sounds like Mr. Stuart said it's been okay for a while, if it's now not happening in the way that we'd like to, that we have to go back to them and explain to them, we really urge them to follow what we have agreed upon in the past, which is one hour, one truck per hour.
So I was...
That's making it, that's understanding...
I was going to ask you for an update on the water depot at the end of the meeting during the manager's report, but perhaps you'd like to bring that up now?
Sure, so I think we would all like to find a permanent solution, not only Mr. Stuart, but all of us, that would help relieve the pressure on that neighborhood.
Well, it's not just me, it's my whole neighborhood.
Please don't interrupt.
You know that we've got a permitted facility on, off of Main Street that we would hope to construct. We have two vendors that we're working with right now to finance that construction. We hope to have something built this construction season and permanently move that delivery, that distribution system away from its current location to Main Street. So that's our ultimate goal. We'd very much like that to happen as soon as possible.
Okay. So this is not an agenda item, but are there any other, anything else that you'd like to add before we move on?
I'd like to say that I'm not the only one affected by this. I mean, it looks like it's just me, because it's my front door, but everybody in that neighborhood, and I've had petitions, and I should have brought a copy of the petition. I petitioned everybody in that neighborhood, and they all agree, that should not be in that residential neighborhood.
And we agree with you.
So going back, going back to it, the one an hour, settled out the nonstop, you know, rattling everybody's houses, it's like an earthquake, every time they pull out of that low spot, that rattles everybody's house. Now, the house next door just got sold, they put all brand new tenants in it, every one of those tenants has come to me and complained about the water, and wondered why I'm out there taking video. And I said, do you see why I'm taking video? And they understand, yeah, this is nuts. This should not be here. Why is this, there's people, these people never even knew that was there, till they moved in there. That's how obscured the whole thing has become to most people that don't have to live it, but once they live there, they're like, this is insane. I say, I tried to explain this to everybody.
You may, very briefly, and then we're going to move on to the next item. Thank you, Mr. Stuart.
I went up at Bill's request last week, and I spent about four hours watching the trucks come in and out, and they were on their best behavior. It was one truck an hour.
It's because they're watching, you're watching them, that's what they do, but the minute you turn your back, they know no one's watching, no one's in my driveway, they go right back to doing it the way they want to do. And it's, and they're using Main Street again, going west. They're heading down with the biggest truck that shouldn't be there, the triaxle, is heading on down west.
Today, I stopped at the pull-off on 279 and talked to a truck driver who was on his cell phone, waiting for his turn to come in for his hourly pickup, so it's not everybody. We acknowledge there's a problem, some people are acting fine. Dan, you know, we need you to call them again, and we need to get them on the hourly schedule. We thank you for bringing this to our attention again.
Thank you.
We are working on a permanent solution.
No, I understand.
We're working really hard on getting it moved out of your neighborhood.
I really understand that, Dawn, I really do. And I have been trying to work with you quietly, comfortably, but when it becomes uncomfortable, when they start ramrodding water, it's just, it's, I wish you could live in that house for 24 hours, and listen to what goes on, and feel that whole house shake. I mean, it's not, it shouldn't be there, and we understand that moving it is going to solve this problem.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Point taken, yeah. So we are not going to do the original item number four on our list tonight, which was the S V M C topic, but we are going to have a workforce presentation from Shannon. Excuse me. And Shannon, we'd like to, if you don't mind, give us just a little bit of an overview of what you're, of how this came to be, if you would, please.
Sure. Well, April Career Month is right around the corner, and so I spoke with Jeanne Jenkins, and I'm also, I regularly attend the Workforce and Education Committee... and I'm also, I regularly attend the Workforce and Education Committee that is part of the Bennington County Industrial Corporation. And so we talked about inviting members of the committee to talk about their work, what their various organizations do for the community, how they collaborate around workforce and education. And so tonight, I invited, we've got Wendy Morse here from the Vermont Department of Labor, and she's one of the co-chairs of the committee, Rob Bonney from the CDC, the Southwest Vermont Career Development Center, and Laura Boudreaux, and Jim Colkeen are here from the Southwestern Vermont Supervisory Union, the school system. So I think I'll start with Wendy, and if you want to talk about the Department of Labor, that would be great.
Thank you for being here tonight, working with us on this.
Thank you for having me. I do have some copies of April Career Month activities that I'd like to share. Can I bring them up?
Sure, please do. Thank you. Make sure Nancy gets one. Good.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Oh my, a lot going on in April.
And this is still a draft.
This is four...
This is a draft.
This is four pages of activities.
It's only three if we put it on a longer paper.
I see.
Now, I had to print a little paper.
So, thank you for having us today to talk about workforce and ed and Department of Labor. So I'm a regional manager with the Vermont Department of Labor, and I manage three of the American Job Center offices of the 12 around the state. I manage services in Middlebury, Rutland, and Bennington. I am a Bennington native. I live here still, born and raised, love Bennington. So I thought maybe it would be helpful to sort of frame around what our workforce challenges are in order to help bring you into why workforce and ed activities really exist. So it's no surprise, our unemployment rate is incredibly low right now. We're at 2.3% for the state, 3.1% for Bennington, which is still much lower than the national at 3.5. So what does that really mean for Bennington? Really what that means is there's about 340 people right now in Bennington that are currently receiving unemployment benefits. So we're looking at a very small number of folks that are looking for work that do not have work right now. So that's sort of good news, right? That's the economy, it's great, it's really healthy. The challenge right now is that employers do find it difficult to recruit talent for their openings. You know, employers can only grow to the extent of the workforce. And so with the workforce being so tight, the unemployment rate being so low, it is a challenge right now for employers to recruit and fill their various openings. The other challenge that they have right now is that there are, you know, people that may be applying to openings where the skill gap is actually greater. So an employer may be looking at one particular skill set, and the candidates that they have coming through the door may not be matching that need. So that's, that is an issue that employers are currently facing. The good news, though, is that because the economy is so great, employers are definitely a little more able to take risks in really addressing that skill gap with people, and they're more interested in working with those individuals and helping them upskill in the way that they need to be upskilled to match that need. So that's actually good news, too. So let's talk about the workforce numbers as a whole. And this, this challenge isn't necessarily, you know, unique to Vermont. There are lots of other states that have these challenges as well, and this is certainly not unique to Bennington. Workforce numbers as a whole have been fairly stagnant for the last 20 or so years, meaning that there hasn't been a whole lot of growth coming into the state. You know, we haven't had people that are just flooding to Vermont in droves to come live here and work here, and so they've been relatively flat. The other part of that labor force number is that we have what we call a low, really declining labor force participation rate, and that declining rate is across all genders, it's across all populations, and it's across all ages. And so, you know, what that means is that there was a lot more people, you know, 30, 40 years ago that were in the workforce than there are today. And so if you're looking at that in terms of a continuum, it's forecasted to continue to decline. And this is not just in Vermont, but this is across the nation. Our LMI chief, Matt Barowitz, believes that the earlier a person starts into the workforce and engages in, in the world of work, the more likely it is that they're going to stay in the workforce over their lifetime. So, you know, we have, so I'm going to back up, so keep that thought in mind. The other challenge that we really have is that since we don't have people coming in in Groves, we've got to figure out ways to expand our workforce. And this is one of the governor's priorities, actually, is to really try to, try to figure out ways to expand. And he's doing this expansion on lots of different platforms. One is through all of the relocation assistance programs that are coming into Vermont. Department of Labor has been a real key partner in that, in helping to make those employment connections for folks that are considering relocating to Vermont or to Bennington. We have ambassadors all over the state in our offices that are that point of contact for people who are thinking about that. So it's one way of expanding the labor force. Another way of expanding the labor force is really looking at our youth populations that are coming up through, and those that are really emerging into the workforce, and giving them all sorts of knowledge about the opportunities of career pathways that exist in our communities. That's one way that we can expand the workforce, and engaging them at earlier, earlier ages. And then the other way of expanding the labor force is to take those folks that are currently here, already living here, that are not necessarily attached to the labor force, but really drawing them out. Those could be, you know, stay-at-home parents. Childcare, we know, is a big issue, and sometimes that's a choice, you know, where one parent has to stay home, so it's drawing them out and figuring out ways to solve that issue. Could be people that have already retired, who may be looking for, you know, other employment and pulling them back into the labor force if they're interested and wanting to. So really, that pulling back into the labor force can happen at lots of different levels, and that's another part of labor force expansion that Department of Labor has been working on. And of course, this is in addition to all of our other core services that we offer all the time, so if anybody's interested in learning more, come into our office, give me a call. We are located right at the, in the State Office Building, right next to the Deer Park. We're open Monday through Friday, quarter of eight until 4:30, and you don't even need an appointment, you can just come in and see our smiling faces. So that's sort of the Department of Labor workforce picture. So what does that mean for workforce and ed? Why do we get involved in all of this stuff? We get involved, and we've got some great partners that you'll hear from shortly, we get involved in workforce and ed because workforce and ed really provides that continuum of career exploration that's specific to Bennington, and really, it's expanded into Bennington County, so it's not just Bennington anymore. And it's that, it's that whole idea that we want to showcase and highlight all of those opportunities that exist for people at all levels, and really starting at the elementary school levels, which you will hear shortly. You all have the April Career Month and sitting in front of you, so you can see, and this is, Jeannie said, this is really just a draft form of all of the amazing activities that are happening in April. We started April Career Month about, say, eight years ago now?
Your child just graduated seventh. This will be an eighth year.
Yeah, eighth year, right, eighth year. When we started it, it was really just, there was a small group of us that got around a table and said, "Hey, wouldn't it be cool if we just celebrated career activities in one week in April?" And so it used to be April Career Week, and we used to fit all of our activities into one week. And within probably two to three years, we figured out that, whoa, we can't fit everything into one week because there's too much great stuff happening. So now, we try to fit everything into April, and even that is becoming challenging as we're really spilling over into the months leading up. So we're spilling over to some activities in March, and we're spilling over into May. There's a lot of really cool stuff happening in May, too. A lot of these, actually, all of these programs and events that we have, this could not be made possible if it weren't for the amazing work of this group. And this group meets one time a month, and it meets at C C V, and it meets for largely an hour, that's it. All of this work happens in about an hour. It's the brainstorming stuff that happens in an hour. And we get together and we talk about, you know, sort of gaps that we're seeing within the work, local workforce. We have very heavy representation from, and there are active people that are coming every single month. We're usually having to add extra chairs. We probably have, on average, maybe 25 people that show up every month, and it's really robust conversation. But we have people from, you know, S V S U, from C C V. When S V C was here, we used to have representatives from them as well, the town of Bennington. I know I'm going to, I'm going to miss people.
Town of, like, agencies.
Yep, agency, right, agencies, state agencies, local agencies, boards, Lightning Jar, I mean, there's...
Businesses.
Businesses, right. We've got business representatives. See, Jeannie's got the, got the listener head. It's just an amazing amount of people that rally around from the community that really support, you know, this mission of really providing that continuum of career exploration. And I don't want to go into, do too many details with some of the other events that S V S U and the CDC may, may talk about, but it really is just an amazing, amazing amount of work that gets, gets done.
It's quite a list.
Yeah.
I need to study it, and I'm not trying to pay attention to you, but it's very impressive.
Yeah. And would it be okay, so last year, you guys were gracious and provided a proclamation, which I just think is the coolest thing, that the town of Bennington has done that around Career Month. Would it be okay if I read that proclamation, or if it got read?
The proclamation...
Of designating April as April Career Month for Bennington.
Sure, we haven't seen that yet, have we?
From last year.
Yeah, this is from last year.
Oh, I thought you meant for this year.
Yeah, no, 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 this is last year's proclamation.
Oh, yes, please do.
Okay, okay. All right. So, and this, again, was signed last year on April 8th of 2019. So whereas Bennington County Workforce and Education Committee stakeholders, a robust, grassroots, community-based collaborative, inclusive of members from community organizations, institutions, and employers, and whereas Bennington County, consistent with the state of Vermont as a whole, faces workforce challenges that includes but is not limited to current and forecasted labor shortages, declining labor force participation rates, and misconceptions of local job and career pathways opportunities, and whereas Bennington County Workforce and Education Committee stakeholders are instrumental and effectively collaborating on resolving workforce challenges one project at a time, and whereas Workforce and Education Committee stakeholders develop specialized K-through-adult continuum of career pathway exploration projects that help raise awareness of opportunities and proven current and future talent pipelines in relation to engagement with the local job economies, and whereas Workforce and Education Committee stakeholders remain keenly in tuned with project impact evaluation, trends, opportunities, and challenges within the local workforce economy, and whereas the month of April is Bennington Career Month, a culmination of events and activities in Bennington County that celebrates career pathway awareness at every level and recognizes the positive impact collaborative workforce development has on labor force, employers, and the Bennington County economy. And now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Bennington Select Board, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Bennington Career Month. And my thanks to you guys for doing that for last year. We are very excited that that proclamation happened. And I also want to, so Jeannie co-chairs the Workforce and Ed Committee, and she is the glue that holds this whole committee together. She does amazing amount of, amazing job at, you know, connecting people and facilitating meetings, and just, just, just an amazing amount of energy around this, so I want to thank Jeannie personally.
That's great, thank you. My apologies, I thought you were bringing us a new proclamation you wanted to read us and approve tonight, and I meant to tell you that we hadn't seen it in our packet, but that, yes, last year...
Yeah, this is last year's.
Yep, and we're happy to have you go forward, and everything you read there is, was true then, and is still true today, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Great. Why don't we save questions until the end, please, so we can get through the other presenters at this point? Thank you. Who's next?
Rob.
Good evening, Rob. Please introduce yourself and give us your...
Sure, well, that's a hard act to follow, so. My name is Rob Bonney. I am the Workforce and Adult Education Coordinator at the Career Development Center. The Career Development Center is the regional technical high school for Bennington County, as well as Housick Falls. And when I say technical high school, what I'm talking about is what most people know as vocational education, but we do like to point out that in addition to what is thought of as traditional vocational education programs, the Career Development Center has quite a few highly academic programs as well, including pre-law, human services, theater, video production. So we have a wide variety of programs for interested students. My role as in Workforce and Adult Education Coordinator is fairly obvious. I oversee our adult education classes, which are commonly thought of as the night classes, even though they don't all happen at night. And we have now seven adult education programs. They are the Licensed Nursing Assistant Program, which we hope to have over 40 students go through this year. Many of us are going to get old and wind up in a home someday, and L and As are the ones that are going to take care of us, so this is a very important program. We have a Commercial Driver's License Program. We also have a program in advanced manufacturing, where we work with a lot of the local manufacturing firms to help provide a labor force for them, as well as upskilling current employees that they have. This spring, we partnered with the Bennington Rescue Squad to offer an E M T class at our school as well, and that's going on as we speak. We also, too, have two online programs, Veterinary Assistant and Pharmacy Technician. And we are, we just recently hired a new Evening Adult Culinary Instructor as well. So our first class is actually going to be for S V S U employees, Healthy Cooking. I've heard it's full, that's great. So we're looking forward to that. So, but we're also going to be offering some shorter-term fun cooking classes, but we also plan to offer a workforce-based culinary training program that would last a couple months and get people ready to work in the kitchen at many local restaurants. My programs are really designed to help fill workforce needs, so part of my role is interacting with the community and finding out where the workforce needs are, and with the capacities that we have at the Career Development Center, develop these, we'll call them short-term workforce training programs. As much as possible, we try and have people who complete these programs receive an industry-recognized credential, for those of us who are involved in workforce development, that's one of those key terms. And if you think of these things, it's, it's beyond high school, and it can also be part of the college process, but people like to think linearly, so it's kind of in between that high school and college when you're thinking of it on the continuum. That's, that's not exclusive, but these are folks who, college for some reason may or may not, well, may not work for them at this time, but can find job skill training programs that will get them a credential that'll allow them to enter the workforce, generally in entry-level positions, earning, for the most part, $15 and up. And these are fields that are in high demand throughout our economic region as well. So we try to make sure that we have classes that where there are employment opportunities for people at the end as well, and we're very confident in the programs we have at this point in time. So that's a bit of an overview of my role, and I guess we're saving questions for the end. One thing I would say, it's, I believe it's on your schedule for April Career Month, it may seem a bit of an odd fit, but the Vermont Adult Career and Technical Education Association, of which I'm a member, has partnered with the Vermont Department of Health, and we are offering a community workshop called Understanding Opioid Addiction. This is a community workshop, it's for anyone, although educators do get professional development credit through the A O E. So you will see that on the schedule, and I just want to spread the word about that, it's a very... it's a very inexpensive workshop, it's over three nights, we'll feed you dinner. James Gully is the, the instructor for this, he's also our law enforcement instructor at the CDC, and we'll even provide childcare for families who don't have access to that in the evening. So we ran this once in Bennington last spring and we had a full house, we had 25 people sign up for it, and we're hoping to be able to do that again. So I just wanted to put the word out about that workshop and how important that is as well for folks to be able to come in and learn about the opioid crisis and what they can do to help, so.
Rob, can I just say, so it's, it's Wednesdays, April 22nd, 29th, and May 6th?
Yes, that's correct. Yep, absolutely.
It looks like there's financial assistance available, so people should not let that be a barrier to participating.
Absolutely, we have scholarship funds, it's part of the grant that the Department of Health gave us, and we have scholarship funds to make that happen for people. So all they have to say is, I can't afford it, we'll cover it for you, so, yep.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, we'll have some questions for you at the end, yeah. Another superstar from our school system.
A short one.
A short one.
I'm Laura Boudreaux, I'm the Assistant Superintendent of the SVSU, and I was listening to Wendy and Rob speak, and the word that comes to mind is collaboration. So we look forward to attending monthly meetings because it gives us an opportunity to hear what's happening in our community and then to collaborate around possible things that we can do together. Through the lens of the SVSU, we function under continuous improvement plans and we set goals that got our district and our schools. One of our district goals is around personalization, and under the goal of personalization, we are looking at pathways, which you heard earlier, Wendy talked about pathways, and we also focus on personalized learning plans because we want to make sure that our students are setting goals. And part of that goal is developing a pathway or interest. We are dependent on our community to help us inspire our youth, so we look for opportunities for mentoring. That can happen, my example would be the Workforce and Ed Committee helping us gather community members to go to the middle school and to sit with middle schoolers as their, and to share different pathways that are happening in the community and then help them reflect back in their personalized learning plans. Those same experiences happen in the high school and they become more targeted as children grow in age. In terms of the community piece, I was thinking about the career opportunities that are about to start to happen, and if you, you have the flyer in front of you, if you peruse the flyer, you'll notice that you'll see the middle school in there. The middle school has a counselor, Hannah Green, that attends the Workforce and Ed Committee meetings, and they offer a big career week for their students, and I know that it is membership from the Workforce and Ed Committee that come and volunteer at the middle school and help make that function. You'll notice under the lens of the high school, you'll see that there is a college fair in there as well, and they have a work, they have a workforce person in their building that also looks at the community for mentoring opportunities for students in a more intense fashion than you would at the middle school. And what's exciting is our conversation has shifted to the elementary level, and so what you will notice in that flyer as well is, we also want to make sure that we're starting to think at a very young age about kids that are dreaming about possible careers. And so you'll notice that Benell and Pownell in particular have received support from this particular committee to offer functions this past year, which was, which was great, which we had outcomes. So if I go back to where I began, I feel like I so appreciate the collaboration, it's really helped us to create opportunities for our students and get them excited and engaged about their community and the possibilities.
That's great, thank you, thank you, Laura. Let's see.
Can I say a few words about CCV since I couldn't be here? Okay, so CCV was, was going to be part of this presentation, but Darcy Oaks is ill and so was not able to be here. And so a really short summary of how CCV fits into this picture is also collaborates with everyone in the Workforce and Education Group and offers both long-term and short-term education and training opportunities. So associate degrees, I think there are 11 different associate degrees, and about the same number of short-term certificates that could be completed in a year or less. One, one feature that we've talked about a lot here is the Startup 802 Program, which really addresses entrepreneurship and allows people from the community, from the high school, using dual enrollment vouchers, and, and CCV students to just play with what would it look like if I started a business? And it can be a fictitional or fictitious or real business. And then there are showcases every quarter where people can stand up, give one-minute pitches, and get feedback from leaders in this community who come to the showcases to make sure that people know what resources are available. Apprenticeships, I was just thinking, CCV's been involved with the Manufacturing Group and Career Development Center around hopefully getting new hires in manufacturing into apprenticeship programs so that they can get training while they're being paid on the job. So I'm just going to leave it at that, but I'm sad that Darcy wasn't able to be here tonight, but just wanted CCV to be represented.
Thank you, Jeannie. Jim, did you want to say anything tonight?
Good. Good evening.
Okay. Well, we're glad to have you here and won't put you on the spot, so it must be nice for you to come to a meeting where you don't have to be on the spot, so.
It's great to listen to all the wonderful things happen.
That's great, good. So I have a couple of questions, I'm not sure how the, how the board would like to play this, but do we have some other questions from the board? Great, so.
Should we just set up people clock here or do you want to be off here?
Well, I'm not sure what would be easiest, but it seems like it's hard to do the standing up, sitting down, standing up, sitting down thing, so if you wouldn't mind, I'd love to have you, you three come up to the mic and the podium.
Just stand up.
And just stand up and just nudge each other out of the way when you have a good answer. And we'll see, we'll see how that goes, yeah, so, yeah, that, that works too, that's great. So I guess I'll start out just to kind of get the ball rolling here, but I, one of the things that I think we as a board wonder about is, if, if this is successful and all of these things are successful, are we going to be able to bend the curve enough that we are providing the employees that our local employers know, need in order to, in a timely enough fashion, in order not to lose critical employers in this area? So I've heard from many of the manufacturing in particular, but from other places, that it's really difficult to find employees here in town, trained employees. Are we, do we have reason to believe that the Workforce and Education Group, along with the many other efforts, will be able to help us make that, make that work?
I, I think one of the challenges in training these folks is finding these folks. You know, it, we're, the, the numbers are small, and so manufacturing's a very good example. We, we have the programs to train them, it, it's finding those people and getting them into the system and into the training and then getting them workforce-ready is, is really a big part of the challenge. So they're not coming out of the woodwork looking for these types of trainings, they have to be, they have to be coaxed, and that is a big part of the challenge.
And if I can just add to that, I think with, with anything, you have to start somewhere. And we started this eight years ago, this kind of effort eight years ago, our group has absolutely changed and morphed into something that I think is really great. We can only look forward to the influence that this is going to have down the road. I feel like anecdotally, I had a son that graduated last year as a senior from Mount Anthony, and I, and I feel like a lot of his classmates that graduated, of course, these were sixth graders when we started, it just seemed like they knew a lot more about what their transitionary plan looked like post-high school. And so I, I only got to assume that that's because of the influence of all of these programs and activities, you know, within, within the SVSU, and I want to thank the SVSU for, for being so collaborative, because I got to tell you, this does not happen in any of the, any of the, any of the other areas that I manage to this degree, which is really, it's just, it's really remarkable what SVSU does with this group.
Glad to hear that.
I think my quick little take on your original question was, the more that we know, the more we can expose our kids to what's available in their community and we can keep that connection going, they'll be inspired to want to learn more about how to do that job and to stay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah, that's great, yeah. It's, it's difficult for us to both hear that, that people are struggling with unemployment and to hear that employers are struggling to try to find qualified employees, and those are two difficult things to hold at the same time. And, and I understand, Wendy, that although we would like this all to be data-driven, that sometimes you have to start with a good idea and let it run for a while before you can collect the data to know if it's working. And this is a clearly a long haul effort that's, that's not going to look for instantaneous results, but, but is investing in our youth for a long time, so. Thank you for those answers. Other questions? Bruce?
Hi, Rob.
Hi, Bruce.
As someone who's worked in the career education business for a little more than 20 years, and as a new retiree, no, I'm not interested in coming back into the workforce. I'm, I'm interested in particular in an area that, that you didn't mention, and I don't know what's, has there been any movement or any feelers around building up workforce in the area of construction and building trades and those kind of areas? And are you having any of those kind of conversations? Because I know that those folks have been very difficult to find in the local community, and, and I also know that some of our employers are doing retraining on the job, but are, what kinds of conversations, if any, are you having?
Sure, yeah, our building trades instructor and I have talked about this, and we actually, we, we had some initial conversations with Breadloaf about doing some training for them. Initially Breadloaf, Breadloaf thought that would be good, and then in the end they decided to keep their training in-house, so, you know, that was really their decision. Our building trades instructor and I have talked about having an adult evening introduction to carpentry and building trades class, so that's something we may have in the fall, depending on his availability. So, yeah, there are conversations around that. There's conversations around a lot of different industries who, where, you know, training could be possible. The question is always, can we find students to enroll in that classroom as well? I mean, it's, employers are having a hard time finding people to work, it's also equally tough to find people to enroll in a training class, especially when they don't see the job for them at the end. You know, if people are going to invest their time and money in training, they, they are just short of having a guarantee that there's going to be a job for them at the end, is, and when there's not, it's a real disincentive to enroll in a training program. So that's one of the challenges, is linking them to a job. So certainly our, our partners at the Department of Labor can help with that, but people need to be able to see that as well.
Absolutely, I just want to add one piece of anecdotal information. As I've been freed up from being at the CDC for eight hours a day or whatever it was, and going about town, I have been thrilled really to see how many people, how many people working in this community have gone through the CDC as well as MAU, and, and how many of our town employees are, are folks that I've met 25 years ago when they were sophomores and juniors, and, and those who have come up to, you know, work either at the hospital or working in a variety of different places. So it can work, I, and, and for those who think that there isn't a job at the end, I will say what I always say, there is, trust me, there is, particularly right now.
I mean, one of the things I can tell you, Bruce, is that, I mean, I've been at the CDC for about a year and a half now, but I just looked at the numbers, over the past 15 years, approximately 5,500 people have taken an adult education class and have a, I don't know whether 55,000 people in our economic region, I mean, we're pushing 10% of people have taken a CDC class, plus all the students that have gone, that's the daytime students, so, yeah, the, the, the numbers are there, the influence is, is large.
Interesting. Other questions, comments from the board?
That was pretty much my question, I just, I didn't know how the CDC course offerings were developed, I didn't know how that was communicated, what the, is, when there's a need, do you fill the need, or, I was just curious, but you've pretty much answered my question, and the building trades are obviously carpentry, is it plumbing, electrician, mason?
Yeah, I mean, it's all of those things, we don't necessarily have the capacity to deliver all of those programs at the Career Development Center. So for instance, plumbing and electrical apprenticeships, that's all handled, it's handled at Stafford Tech in Rutland, so, but certainly carpentry is an area that we have an ability to, to deliver training in quite easily.
And you mentioned that finding the students is sometimes a challenge, is finding instructors also a challenge, or is that not a challenge?
It depends, so some of my instructors are also our daytime teachers at the CDC, and they enjoy teaching adults at night. In other areas, we do have to look a little harder, and in some cases, yes, finding an instructor for a program has been a challenge. So for instance, that delayed the expansion of our CDL program until recently when we have found another instructor. So there aren't a lot of people out there with a CDL license who are looking to go through the whole process to become trained as an, and licensed as an instructor, but we're lucky we found one, so.
That's good, thanks.
Jeannie, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if Wendy or Rob could talk about this great match, this career matchup that you guys are doing between high school students and employers who are high, high school students who want to work and employers who want to hire high school students, because they think that's brilliant.
So we can kind of tag-team that one, I think, so, this is the first year that we have done a, this kind of event, and it's called Get a Job, and it really is geared towards high school, for high school students, at the CDC, Mount Anthony, Arlington, Burrin, Burton, and Housick Falls Central. Did I miss any?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so...
We're invited by Twin Valley, too, we'll see if they come.
Oh, yep, so Twin Valley. And it really is a great opportunity for students to connect to the world of work, either through getting a summer job or, you know, just getting an all-year-round job and really exploring that. So it is a collaboration between Vermont Department of Labor, the CDC, Mount Anthony, Housick Falls, it's like all of the schools, and there's a little committee that's formed and are all taking pieces of this event on.
Yeah, I mean, I'll put my spin on it, in talking to some of Wendy's staff from the Department of Labor, we hear from employers that high school kids don't want to work, and we hear from high school kids that employers won't hire us. So we decided that we could squash all of that if we put them all in one room at the same time. So, I mean, it really was the brainchild of, of your staff that work with youth at the Department of Labor, and the CDC offered to host that, and we thought, you know, having all the high schools in our county and economic region to include Housick Falls would be great, and everybody really seems on board, so we're hoping to have, we're hoping to fill the atrium and then the second floor with employers and get students in there with some resumes in hand and ready to fill out some job applications and, and find some work for the summer, so we think this would be a great way.
What's the date?
It is May 27th. That's a Wednesday, I believe.
You got me, but...
Yeah, okay.
May 27th.
May, May 27th, yes, so, and this is just for the high school students, MAU students can walk right next door, that's easy, and the other high schools will be bussing the students down to talk with employers, so. And students should be prepared to apply for jobs, it's not a career fair, we want to be very clear about that. This is an employment hiring event for youth, and we like "get a job," that's with an exclamation point at the end.
You betcha.
Yep.
Other comments, Chad, anything from you? No? So, well, it's, it's great to hear from the three of you, I think something you said in the beginning, Wendy, we have to keep track of, which is, unless we want to lose industry, unless we want to lose businesses, unless we want to lose capacity at our hospitals and places like that, we have to have people that can do the work. We, our three choices are invest in our youth, which is what we've heard a lot about today, invest in our underemployed adults, or recruit people from someplace else, and that, that last one is, is difficult in its own way, too, but it may be something that we have to get to if we're unable to work towards, if we're unable to kind of fill the needs of our local industries and our local businesses through our own schools, knowing that a certain percentage of all the people you educate are going to go somewhere else, that we don't get to keep everybody just because they... get to keep everybody just because they grew up here. So really, really important work. I think it's something that we'd love to see some numbers on as it evolves. And I guess the last question for each of you might be, is there anything that we collectively can be doing to help this process, short of making sure Jeannie shows up at the meetings? Seriously, though, is there anything that the town government, pokey and small as we are, is there anything that we could do that would be helping move the needle on this particular effort?
I can say from the CDC standpoint, the more that the town can support our work-based learning co-op program, you may be familiar with Wendy Klein, you know, it is her role at the CDC to place students in our programs in what people would normally think of as an internship, and they can get academic credit for that, and the work experience is extremely valuable. Dan French from the Agency of Education was at our school today, and our student panel talked with him about how important it was that they got these opportunities to go out and try some of these careers, to find out what they like and what they don't like. So not only directly allowing, you know, students to interact with town government as a co-op student, but also just keeping in mind that we need supportive employers, you know, to say that, no, this may not be an employee right now, you're giving a student a chance to learn, but they could turn into an employee. And that continued support is really important to the success and the mission of the Career Development Center.
Yeah, I would say the same thing. I think it's the collaboration piece and the access, it takes all of us to raise our children, and so I agree with what Rob shared, is we need mentors for our students to share their journeys and so that kids are inspired to want to continue pursuing their pathways.
And I would say ditto. I do want to just add one thing, though, about the relocation, you know, and drawing people in. I'm not sure if a lot of people are aware of the state-of-state weekends that do occur both in Bennington and in Manchester, and the Chamber has done a great job at really boosting those and bolstering those. Department of Labor is really working on the backend. But just to give you sort of a reference point, last weekend, there was the Bromley, it was the ski and stay weekend, and they had 41 individuals come into the area thinking about relocating to Bennington County. So just want to.
That's great.
Put a plug out, that there is definitely, you're right, that is a little bit of a challenge, but there are other great state resources and programs that are facilitating that, that are drawing down to the local level.
That's great. Lucky it was one of the most beautiful ski weekends of the year, so they maybe think it's always like that. That's good. Well, listen, thank you three so much, and thank you, Shannon, for helping pull this together. Any last words from you, Shannon, or are you?
Well, one thing I'll say. Maybe this is a question for Wendy. I mean, it really is remarkable how many people come to these committee meetings across the spectrum, and I'm just wondering if you've seen that elsewhere in the state, or if you guys are a model. What's your experience?
There's some magic sauce down here. I think Jeannie and I have talked about it a lot, and I'm not really sure, I'm not entirely sure what makes the difference down here, other than it is the people sitting at the table, that are all very community-minded, that, you know, there are no such thing as egos. I mean, nobody comes to this meeting with egos, it's everybody's just rolling up their sleeves, digging in, and they also understand that if they attend one of these meetings, they're going to get assigned a project, they're going to have something to take home after, and, you know, some extra work. But I just, it's just an amazing group, and this does not happen at this level in other places around the state. I have one other community that is sort of in its more formative stage, that is really starting to act a lot like this, and I think that in years to come, they'll probably have similar success, but it's not necessarily, there's no structure, really. It's, it is just pure collaboration at its finest. I think that's the magic sauce.
That's great. That's something this community should really be proud of, and thank you so much for being an important part of that. Great. Thank you all very much for coming tonight. Really, really a pleasure to have you. Again, Shannon, thank you for pulling that together. So, Dan, I would ask you, because we have a couple of people here that are, have been waiting very patiently, if we could go through a somewhat abbreviated manager's report.
Absolutely.
And then I'm going to do a very quick upcoming agenda and other business.
So the only thing that I need you folks to do this evening is to sign the certificate of public mileage, it's something we do every year to let the state know how many highway miles we have, it has to do with the state aid, and I would just ask that you sign that, it's been, it's already been filled out.
Everybody or just?
All the, all the select board members.
So two on a line?
Yes. Yeah, they don't give you a lot of space there. So the only, while you're doing that, the only couple of things I'll quickly say is, just so folks know, we did have some questions last time. Household has this waste collection event, this will be happening May 9th at the MAU Middle School, so new location, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, so just make a note of that.
Middle School?
Yes, MAU Middle School, yes. And just one, employment, now I saw Jim Colkeen leave, so I don't have to make this announcement in front of him, although he's well aware of it. Paul Danzaro, who's the current facilities manager with MAU, he will be joining the town on April 6th as our new code enforcement officer and building inspector. We are very proud to have him. He's very, I'm very highly recommended.
He's an excellent person to work with. I like Paul a lot.
He is great. Excellent credential. Sad to see him leave the high school, but it's a great hire for the town. And I told Jim we didn't seek him out, he came to us, so, although we're very happy to have him.
It's a good hire.
He's great. So look forward to Paul working with us in the future. So that's all I have for the manager's report.
Okay. Any questions for Dan? Nope. So our next upcoming agenda, I expect that we will have the SVMC land sale on that. Jeannie, what else? We've got a possible update in BCRC, from BCRC on composting. Dan, is that something that you would talk to them about?
In April, right? I think Stu would talk to them.
Oh, Stu had?
Yeah.
Is there anything we have to do on the Communications Union District? Do we have to elect somebody, I think?
I was going to bring that up in other business, but we do have to appoint a person to that and two alternates.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Just making sure it gets on there.
Yeah. I don't think we, although we've been asked to do it tonight, I don't think, no one's seen it except maybe you and I, and so I think it's something that we're going to have to approve at our next meeting.
I think the next meeting is certainly.
Eric Hatch has been thrown up as somebody who would be willing to do it. He was one of the people that led the CUD effort, so he would be a logical person to represent Bennington, and a couple of alternates have been thrown up. But if anybody is interested in being the delegate for the Communications Union District, should be in touch with, excuse me, with Dan Monks or Stuart Hurd at the town office and let them know of your interest, and we will, we will approve that and elect delegates at our next meeting.
Good.
So we should add that, make sure that gets on the agenda, Dan, too. And ICP, we're looking for that in early, have we picked a date on that?
It's mid-April. We don't have, we think it's going to be, well, I don't want to announce a date because we haven't.
Firm it up.
Definitely firm it up, but it will be in April.
Okay, mid-April, probably.
Okay.
All right. So in my other business, I wanted to mention the CUD, which we did, I'd mentioned, so we'll bring that up at the next thing. The second thing is that the Energy Committee, I was a little bit surprised, Jeannie, to read in the notes, that the Energy Committee feels like they have delivered their recommendations to us.
They do not anymore.
They what?
They don't. They don't.
They don't feel that way?
No.
Okay, okay. So it would be nice when they feel like they have gotten to their final recommendations to have them come to us.
Yes.
And offer recommendations in a sort of more formal setting.
I agree.
And I really look forward to that happening when they're ready for it, but no rush.
Yes. So, no, so basically, what, where we are is that the recommendations have been, the 47, 42, however many we started with, have been boiled down and grouped according to who the partners would be.
Right.
And then what we are doing is taking the ones that we think are most likely to be high on our priority list and getting more information about them to decide if that's where they should be.
Perfect. That's all I need to know. I read in the minutes that they thought they had delivered them, and I was unaware of them having delivered some.
Yes, no.
Okay, great. Other business, Jeannie?
First of all, I'd like to apologize to, I guess, the community Dixieers, Brian Campion. There's a conversation about diversity and racial justice in Vermont tonight at Kappa. I can guarantee you that many of us would have attended that, but unfortunately, we had to be here. So I apologize that we weren't able to be in two places at once. I'm still working on it, being able to do that. And I would just like to put in your ear, last year, I remember bringing up after we reorganized, that I really, really liked and thought it was beneficial when we had that joint select board training session several years ago, and we never did it, and I think it's something we should revisit. I don't know how it should be structured, whether we wanted, would want to pick a few topics, see what the pulse is of other area select boards, but anyway, I just, I feel like we have this incredible resource, the VLCT, and we need, should use them.
And they do have that, they just sent out their invitation for the courses, if people want to take that course, yeah. Bruce?
I have nothing.
Okay. Jim?
Just want to reemphasize the effort that Tom D. and the hospital have taken to really calm people's fears. I think you've done a great job. And to reemphasize that, it's not necessary for you to visit a primary care physician and spend 130 bucks to get a doctor's order, you can do it through the Department of Health at no cost.
Okay, Jeannie?
Yes, two upcoming events at BAM. That's okay. That I just wanted to let people know about. One, on March 21st, which is a Saturday, there's a coding workshop for kids at the Bennington Area Makers, and that's from 10:00 to 1:00. And then on March 23rd, which conflicts with our next select board meeting, there's a personal cybersecurity workshop with sort of an IT security quiz at the Medical Center, Jeff Mazanek, and that will be from 6:00 to 8:00, and that will really be an overview of personal cybersecurity and what you can do to protect yourself. And both of those are free.
Great. Chad, anything?
Pop's concert is Thursday, Friday, Saturday at the high school, I think 7:00 PM. Tickets are still on sale.
Excellent. Great. You can't see with this curtain up that one of us has shorts on tonight, so that's.
It's not me.
I'll say probably the most athletic person at this table has short times, and I said that's really exciting. It means we're getting somewhere. So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to have an executive session for a real estate matter, after which we will not be making any decisions.
Perfect.
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, so we're going to take a three-minute break, and then we're going to move right into executive session. Thank you. All in favor? Say aye. Okay, now we're moving into.